Hi, John.
Okay, Board members. Hello, everybody. Welcome to November 17th Select Board Meeting. Gardner, would you like to start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gardner. All right. Approve of the minutes on November 4th.
And move where you accept the minutes as presented.
All in favor? I mean, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Dan's opposed.
The reason is, I found that the minutes on the new public business were thin. It really didn't capture everything that was said by one individual. What was printed is correct, but I think it was sanitized, and I have a statement on closing statements about that.
All right, Dan. All right. At this time, we're going to do new public business. The clerk does have her three-minute timer. Anyone in the audience, please come up, introduce yourself, and speak right into the microphone. Gentlemen? If anyone wants to go first.
Tony Benton Court, 15th Office Circle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. Okay. Nothing really serious, it's just quick. I did ask for a selectmen's workshop, and I asked a while back, I asked Mr. Bennett for it a while back, I never got it. So I want to make sure that this doesn't go away. I need one. I know you folks are busy, I know you've got a lot of stuff going on, but I want to make sure you put on a calendar that I get, someone gets in touch with you, whatever, because I need one. I have a lot of people that have been complaining and stuff like that. This has been going down for too long. We have to about sit down and figure what's going on, because this is ridiculous, okay? If that's all right with me. You know, the situation I'm talking about is the airport. We just can't keep kicking it down the road. We've got to finally get down and figure out what we're going to do, okay? So I'd like to have a selectmen's workshop on this, so we can understand what's going on, and we can presentation. They came here and gave you a presentation, okay? The residents never gave you a presentation, it's about time the residents give you a presentation on what's going on and what has to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Bill?
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. If I may, on November 13th, two meetings were scheduled. All meetings, commissions or what have you are important. The two that night were conservation and the Finance Committee. I went to the conservation feeling that that would be less time, and I would still be able to get to the Finance Committee meeting. However, when it was over, I came down here, all three doors were locked, I couldn't get in to the meeting, which I was disappointed in. I did go home and watch it, but watching a meeting from home is different, at least to me, than being to get a better feel for what's going on. Again, I was disappointed, and I've asked about it before, scheduling two meetings the same night, and in this case, at the same time, and not in the same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Please go up. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm George Saluto, and the subject is the restoration of Swamp Walk. I wish to sincerely thank this Select Board for your endorsement of the Swamp Walk Restoration Project at your meeting of October 7th. Swamp Walk lies across the Danvers-Wenham border, just south of where the rail trail crosses Route 97. And I'm delighted to inform you of a companion endorsement by the Wenham Select Board at their meeting of November 3rd. The Wenham Select Board discussion was very present, very pleasant, rather, and brief, due especially to the testimony of three individuals. Gardner Trask had previously forwarded a message of support to members of the Wenham Select Board, similar to his personal appearance 15 years ago, to deliver the news that the Danvers Select Board had endorsed the original project. And Sally Curran, who was in attendance, espousing a more important project, but she remained verbally to support our project. And Kate Mallory, Wenham Land Use Director, who has a role similar to the Danvers Land Use Director, she was extremely helpful by performing three tasks. She walked the entire walkway with me. She placed Swamp Walk on the Select Board agenda, and she attended the Select Board meeting to testify in favor of the campaign. On Tuesday, November 10th, I did a walkabout of the site with Emily Frandjuli of the Hamilton-Wenham News. This is truly a Danvers-Wenham mutual community happening. Fifteen years ago, Swamp Walk was built by 200 volunteers and $40,000 in donations during a few weekends in the spring and the fall. No taxpayer funds were used. We have a similar plan for restoration. Our funding goal is only $15,000 this time for materials, landscaping, and maintenance. Something unexpected has already happened, actually, it's not unexpected. I've already received a check for $500 made out to Swamp Walk by a thoughtful Danvers couple. They have addressed it to my home. Happily, Town Hall has already set up an account to receive donations. If you wish to write a check, simply make it out to Swamp Walk and send it to Danvers Town Hall. But even better, two social media websites are ready for launch, which will provide news and information on the project. Namely, weardanvers.com, thank you, Mark Jones, and danversrailtrail.org, thank you, Paul McNulty. The Danvers Rail Trail website has added an online path to directly donate to the restoration project. That's the best way to donate. Finally, a sign will be posted on the kiosk at the north entrance with all this information. May I hand the Town Manager a $500 check and a copy to the Chair?
Sure. Thank you very much.
You can pass that around if you want.
Just be careful, there's no information on it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We'll give it to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. We launched.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else have new public business that would like to go up? Okay. All right, the Board will meet the 2025 Citizens Academy, the graduates. Woo-hoo! Thank you for doing what you do. What you did, anyway.
My name is Jen Breaker. I'm the Assistant Town Manager, and very excited to be here tonight to recognize our sixth graduating class from Citizens Academy. I've prepared a brief slide deck to share some of the highlights of this year's academy and the work the graduating cadets have completed. Almost all of the cadets are in this room, and I see many family members of the cadets, too, and I also see some former cadets in the room, which is really exciting to have during graduation. Citizens Academy was developed as a way for residents to take a deep dive into their local government. The program is a 10-week up-close view of Danvers Municipal Government. Cadets who we, participants who we kindly refer to as cadets, explored various departments through a variety of classes and interactive activities. We accepted applications in the late summer, and in early September, we accepted 20 cadets into the program, and 17 are graduating tonight. In this class, we have new members of our community, members of our community that have lived here for many, many years. We have parents attending with their kids, which is the first parent-kid. We have two parents and kid, first time we've had that. We have family members of past graduates. It's truly a great bunch of cadets. Starting on September 11th and going through just this past Thursday, November 13th, the academy was held on Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 8:30 in several locations around our community. Before we dive into what the cadets did each week, I must thank the many Town of Danvers team members who made Citizens Academy possible. This includes the folks who presented, worked on the presentations and activities, helped set up each week, ordered pizza, and made sure the academy was a huge success. Additionally, I would like to thank Ann Freitas, who is key in helping me prepare for the program, Cheryl Stamford, who makes sure the pizza gets ordered every week, which is one of the most critical parts of the academy, and Erica Visconti, who helped keep the program running when I couldn't attend. It's really a team effort. On September 11th, the cadets joined staff right here in the Tumi Room for their first night of Citizens Academy. Welcome bags awaited them on their chairs. Inside the bags were their binders, which contain the slide decks for each week and supporting materials, a budget book, an annual town report, recycling and trash information, and so much more. Cadets were welcomed by Select Board Chair Bernard, and then heard a general town government overview by the Town Manager. They also heard about the work of the Finance Committee. Because the Town Moderator couldn't attend, the Finance Committee Chair pitched in to cover the important work the moderator does and highlight a town meeting. And to close out the night, the cadets learned all about elections from the Town Clerk's For the second week, the cadets stayed here in the Tumi Room to hear from the Finance Division, assessing accounting, treasurer, collector, and retirement, discuss the work they do to support the finances of the town. The team led the cadets through a budget activity where cadets had to balance a budget, deciding and justifying where to make cuts. Cadets were left with a better understanding and a primer for the weeks to come. We talked about Rodney and the budget almost every week. The third week took the cadets to the Fire Department Headquarters, where they heard from Chief Barry and Deputy Schaffner on aspects of the Fire Department, including services beyond firefighting. Cadets went on a tour and got to see extraction equipment in use. One cadet said, "It was the best class yet. I have a greater appreciation of what the Fire Department does for the citizens of Danvers." Another added, "It's clear that the department is a well-oiled machine." Cadets also got to see the hydraulic rescue equipment in action. A cadet said, "It felt like we were on the sideline of a real accident watching the firefighters And maybe I'm going to show you a 30-second video of that. This is a really great video of the roof of this car being torn off that the cadets got to experience. Four firefighters demonstrated in the garage bay, they brought in the car, they tore the doors off, they went through all the steps as if it was a real car accident that they had to extract somebody from, and in the background, the cadets are gathered around with firefighters explaining the different steps that are going on. I would say this whole extraction took about under 10 minutes to do, and it's really quite impressive. If you're interested in seeing the video, it's on my phone, I'm happy to show you. For Week 4, we headed over to Hobart Street to hear from the divisions of Public Works. We heard from Forestry and Grounds, Buildings, Equipment, Engineering, Streets, Trash, Recycling, and Water. Information was shared on how we service vehicles, snow and ice removal, trees in Danvers, and how they can interfere with sidewalks, and how we maintain our municipal buildings, all while sitting in the Hobart Street garage surrounded by equipment and tools. One cadet told me they found it very impressive to drive into the DPW yard and see all the equipment with plows and sanders on, ready to go. We continued to move through Danvers in the fifth week of the program, heading to Endicott Park to hear from Inspeccional Services and Planning. The Building Commissioner chatted with us about rules and regulations, laws, and zoning the office must follow. Planning was ready to get the cadets thinking. After discussing the work of the office and helping the cadets learn more about zoning, they let the cadets rezone Endicott Street. Cadets were provided with a map of the area, and post-it notes that were color-coded for different types of zoning, and worked in teams to develop what they would want to see. Planning took the office back to the, took the maps back to the office for inspiration. Cadets had the most questions for Planning and Inspeccional Services, and I did tell Planning and Inspeccional Services, they're a rather quiet group, they don't ask too many questions, and they, they said, "I got that wrong." They found the presentation to be extremely insightful and interesting, according to one cadet. During Week 6, Chief Lovell welcomed the cadets to the Police Department and took them on the tour of Police and Dispatch, followed by an overview of what the department does. That included some statistics and community needs that the department addresses. Officers covered Community Services Division and the work and challenges the division encounters, including various programs they offer in the Danvers Public Schools. Cadets found the community outreach information very helpful and were impressed with the number of uplifting police activities the department focuses on. Class was interrupted when a stranger walked into the room, lost and looking for the main entrance. Later in class, when learning about eyewitness credibility, the cadets learned that that was not in fact a lost visitor, when they were asked to identify how tall he was, what color shirt he had, what color hair, and other details about the visitor, a highlight of the police night. Cadets also got to enjoy seeing behind-the-scenes areas of the Police Department that you can only see through the academy. No one was arrested this night. We then moved over to the library to hear from Recreation and Library Teams. Recreation covered topics from rail trail to fun club and the new therapeutic recreation position. Taking a page out of the TV show Shark Tank, cadets were broken into groups to develop and pitch a new program. The group that won had great ideas for the community use of the waterfront, from kayaking and paddle boarding to water safety for kiddos. It was a great idea. Other ideas included a gaming night for multi-ages and a program to match volunteers with community member needs. Cadets had a lot of great feedback on learning about the therapeutic recreation services the town now offers. All cadets commented on the great energy both the library and recreation teams brought Set up in the Senior Center, cadets heard from the Veteran Service Officer on the programs the division oversees and resources available to Danvers veterans and their families. The Senior Center staff spoke about the programs and services they provide and had cadets take a look at a not-so-great Senior Center newsletter before looking at the Danvers pretty great Senior Center newsletter. To end the night, the cadets heard from Public Health. One cadet was impressed by the services offered by the Senior Center, veterans, and public health. She said that she had no idea about the services available to the Danvers seniors, and it was great to learn more. Everyone loved the energy the Public Health nurse brought, dressed up in her Halloween For Week 10, the cadets headed to the muster room of the Electric Department to hear from Electric, Business, Water Treatment, and IT. The IT Department covered the work they do to maintain our municipal technology. The Electric Division discussed our power portfolio, simplified the power grid, and discussed energy conservation. The Business Office highlighted the important work they do to support the residents, customers, and employees. The Water Treatment Department covered water quality and testing they do to provide great water to our residents. All cadets are excited to schedule a tour of the water treatment plant, and some said they now better understand how water restrictions are put into place. For the final week of the academy, the cadets headed over to Danvers High School to learn about our public schools. They were greeted by Superintendent Dan Bauer, and he provided an overview of the district. The cadets then heard from the curriculum directors, who taught us how kiddos learn to read and sound out words, something I'm still processing in my own head. It was a very intriguing presentation. It was a perfect way to close out the academy sessions. And that brings us to night. The graduating cadets have worked hard. They've shown up every Thursday for 10 weeks, asked great questions, engaged in discussions, and group work, and they have made us proud to serve them in the Danvers community. Before we recognize the graduating cadets by calling them up to receive their certificate, I'd be happy to take any questions the Board may have.
Questions, Gardner?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mike?
Is there pizza tonight?
There might be some leftover pizza in one of the fridges somewhere, but...
No questions. Thank you.
Dee?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Dan?
This is great, this is the sixth one.
Sixth class.
And you still get filled up.
We still fill them.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
I think it's wonderful. Thank you, and I can't believe it's, it's over. It seems like it just started, right?
It does seem like it just started.
Unbelievable. Thank you, everybody.
I do have one question. Jill, have you considered actually taping it for DCAT? A lot of people would love to go, or don't have the ability to go on 10 weeks long. It might be beneficial to tape them.
We have thought about taping it. There's something about the in-person discussion that we feel really adds to the program. It's definitely a thought out there. We want to try to get people in the room as much as we can and around the different locations, and we wouldn't be able to tape at some of the behind-the-scenes locations we go, so it would, it would take away a bit, but we're always looking for ways to improve the program.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So, cadets, we will read your names, and when we do, please come up to the podium to get your certificate. Once all certificates are handed out, we would ask...
Jill, are you going to go down there? I'm going to go down there, so...
That the cadets join us in the lobby for a group photo. And we're going to have the Town Manager and the Chair join us.
Yep, and I'm going to have the clerk read the names. Okay? Thank you.
Bon.
Ready? Mary Agnew.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Gaila Bartlett.
Thank you. You were wonderful. Thank you for your energy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Bernazani.
Yay!
Elizabeth Brennan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Brown.
Thank you.
Walter Coombs.
Thank you.
Familiar faces now.
Riley Dunovan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon Perry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louisa Pumphrey.
Thank you so much.
Adrian Ritchie.
Thank you so much.
I was almost asleep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal Spring.
Thank you so much.
Marian Sweeneyarsky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Sweeneyarsky.
Thank you.
Lisa Trask.
Thank you.
Andy Vaughn.
Thank you.
Jackson Vaughn.
Congratulations.
And lastly, Jay Wasserman.
Congratulations.
We'll do a quick photo of all the graduates right now.
We'll take a two-minute break.
Okay. Two-minute break.[1468.15]
A lot of people would love to go or don't have the ability to go on 10 weeks long. It might be beneficial to tape them.
We have thought about taping it. There's something about the in-person discussion that we feel really adds to the program. It's definitely a thought out there. We want to try to get people in the room as much as we can and around the different locations. And we wouldn't be able to tape at some of the behind-the-scenes locations we go, so it would take away a bit, but we're always looking for ways to improve the program.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So, cadets, we will read your names, and when we do, please come up to the podium to get your certificate. Once all certificates are handed out, we would ask-
Jill, are you gonna go down there?
That the cadets join us in the lobby for a group photo. And we're gonna have the town manager and the chair join us.
Yep, and I'm gonna have the clerk read the names. Okay. Thank you.
Bon.
Ready? Mary Agnew.
Gaila Bartlett. Elizabeth Bernazani. Elizabeth Brennan. Karen Brown. Walter Coombs.
Thank you. Familiar faces now.
Riley Donovan. Shannon Perry. Louisa Pumphrey. Adrian Ritchie. Crystal Spring. Marian Sweeneyasky. John Sweeneyasky. Lisa Trask. Andy Vaughn. Jackson Vaughn. And lastly, Jay Wasserman. We'll do a quick photo of all the graduates right off.
We'll take a two-minute break.
Okay, two-minute break. Thank you for that. What a terrific job that the cadets did and all the town employees that helped out. Thank you. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading those names. The board will consider a request by the property owner Pioneer Charter School to approve and sign a drainage easement modification at 175 Water Street. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the Pioneer Charter School of Science. With me tonight is Hussein Kara, the Chief Development Officer for the school. We also have the project engineer as well as the project surveyor from Hancock Associates are here this evening as well. The Pioneer Charter School owns the property at 175 Water Street in Danvers, as well as the abutting property at 67 Pulaski Street in Peabody. And permits have been issued through Danvers and Peabody for the construction of a new charter school. The school building itself will be located entirely in Peabody. However, in 1953, a drainage easement was granted to the town of Danvers, and as that drainage easement was laid out, it really bisects this property. It goes right through the middle of it. And in order to facilitate any reasonable use of this property, but certainly the proposed use of the property, it really requires the relocation of that easement. And the project engineer and project surveyors from Hancock have been working with the town of Danvers, with Mr. King is here this evening, to come up with a relocation of the easement that is acceptable to the engineering department. And I have submitted to you a letter dated November 3rd with some plans attached to it showing the location of the site itself with the proposed school building on it, as well as the relocation of the easement. The easement document was also provided as part of that. The case law associated with this was documented in my letter, and there really is a... The holder of the survey into state, which is the school, has the right to relocate an easement, provided that the purpose of the easement is not frustrated. And there's a three-pronged test, and that's outlined in the letter that I've provided to you. And this particular situation satisfies that test quite easily. Prior to submitting this application to you, I did meet with Mr. King as well as Mr. Zakelli, Brian Zakelli, the Director of Planning, and they were both in support of this relocation as shown on the plan. Town Council has also weighed in on the process that we're seeking for the relocation. And again, the relocation itself is entirely within, basically, the middle of the site, where the drainage easement enters the property and where the drainage easement exits the property remains the same. So, there's just a really a change in the location of the easement within the site itself. Again, I've got the project engineer and the project surveyor here if you should have any questions. I did submit the relocation easement deed to you, and the charter school has executed that document, and that was provided to the town clerk prior to this meeting. You have done this a couple of times in the past, and the easement deed follows the form that you used most recently for relocation of the easement. That's all I have for you.
Excellent. Clerk, is the paperwork in order?
The paperwork is in order.
Okay, and we do have Stephen King here. Stephen, did you want to get up and say anything, please? Introduce yourself. I'm sure everybody knows you, but...
Good evening. Thank you, chairs. Stephen King, Town Engineer for Department of Public Works, Town of Danvers. As Nancy previously spoke, we did have a few conversations, some meetings regarding the easement relocation. For the purposes of Danvers, I wanted to make sure the relocation was still accessible for us to be able to make our repairs if necessary and make sure that the overall drainage easement and still fact took its tributary area through the site like it naturally does today. So, for my part, as far as technically sound, that both those points were made and actually completed by Hancock Associates with the easement relocation and the necessary slopes that we need on the drainage pipes. So, both those worked for us. We're still able to maintain and operate that easement like we do today.
Excellent. Board members' questions, Ganna?
No, the town engineer and his...
Okay, Dan?
Thank you. Yes. No, everything seems to be in order. We checked off all the boxes with the appropriate people. There's plenty of diagrams here. I had no questions after looking at everything, so that's fine.
Mike?
Nope. It was very documented well. Thank you.
Dee?
Just a quick clarifying question. So, we get all new pipes? They're gonna move...
Correct. Yeah, in order to facilitate the drainage, they're gonna have to install a new drainage pipe within the new easement area.
Okay. And does that come with any warranty, or it's just upon inspection?
Upon... Yeah, so we're... As part of... They have a stormwater management permit with us, so we're gonna have to inspect the pipe and make sure that it's actively installed per our regulations.
Okay.
And typically, there's a constructibility one-year warranty review on any... One-year warranty on any pipe associations that they do work for the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Board members, do I have a motion to approve Pioneer Charter School to approve the signed drainage easement modification at 175 Water Street?
Sounds like you just made the motion.
I shouldn't have.
That's fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do you consider taking number six out of order unless Mr. King wants to stay for classification?
Sure, that would be fine. So, women, so take six out. So, which one do you want to move?
Rodney.
We'll put Rodney next?
Rodney, he's staying, so it doesn't matter then. That's what I was asking.
All right.
So, I was gonna let you go home early, Rodney.
Yeah, Stephen, yeah, thank you.
But Stephen can leave.
Rodney was like, "Oh, Mr. Conley is staying."
Well, I thought so, but I just wanted to check.
Yeah, Rodney's got a lot of questions, right? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the board. We'll consider... I mean, I'm sorry, the board will conduct the annual tax classification hearing. And who is here for our wonderful presentation?
My glasses for these.
Gotta spread everything out now here.
On my computer.
Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name's John LaBelle. I'm the Chief Assessor for the Town of Danvers. All right. The reason I'm here tonight is to help you all with the annual classification hearing. And the purpose of this is for the Select Board to determine the allocation of local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real estate plus personal property for fiscal year 2026. In deciding the allocation, the board must adopt a residential factor, which is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy applied by the five classes of property. And this is all done under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. In doing so, the board has four actions that they have to take. The first is the board has to select whether or not to... Sorry. In addition to selecting the factor, there's three other options, whether or not to offer a shift within the residential class, between residential and open space, and among commercial properties. And we can all talk about those a little later. So, in summary, this four duties tonight, selecting a minimum residential factor, whether or not to select an open space discount if you want to grant a residential exemption, and if you want to grant a small commercial exemption. And throughout this process, if you have any questions, just stop me, and I'll answer as best I can. So, I'm gonna show you some data here. Now, this data is all based on our valuation date of January 1st, 2025, so it's all based on calendar year 2024 data. The first slide just kind of shows the breakup of the values throughout the town, with residential, again, being the most at just over 79 percent, commercial just over 15 percent, industrial at 4, and personal property just under 2. We do not have anything that the town classifies as open space. Anything you would think of open space usually falls under our chapter land status, which actually falls under the residential and commercial space classes, depending on the actual use. This slide here just kind of further breaks down the history of the distribution of the values. It's slightly gaining more residential year after year. Over the last three years, it's been about a 1 percent change from the CIP class to residential class. This slide here just kind of shows the valuation changes for FY '26. Overall residential values are up about 6.5 percent, commercial just over 5, industrial just under 5, personal property remain kind of flat throughout the year. And this slide here kind of further breaks down the residential class. Apartment buildings over four units saw the biggest jump in valuation, mainly because of a big building down the street, which contributed to that value. Three families are up just under 7 percent, two families just over 7 percent, condos about 5.5 percent, and single families just over 5 percent, an increase in the average value. This slide here just kind of compares this year's levy to last year's levy, showing the growth. Overall, the increase in the actual levy for this year is 3.4 percent. Kind of shows the breakdown here.
The excess levy capacity, how much of that is attributable to the Maple Square project? A rough idea?
None of the excess levy. This is how much of the...
I'm sorry, none of the excess levy. How much should the valuation increase? How much is Maple Square bringing in tax-wise?
Tax-wise, I'll get to that in the growth.
Okay, thank you.
I'll tell you that number.
Thank you.
Value-wise, just before I get there, the value for this year is not at 100 percent complete. It's still, as of January 1, it wasn't fully occupied, so we're not up to the 100 percent valuation on the property yet, but I will go over that.
Okay.
I will go over it right now. So, this chart kind of shows the history of our new growth. This year, the total growth in tax dollars is just over $854,000. Of that, 19 percent was Maple Square. And just to put that kind of in perspective, the next highest project bringing in growth was 8 percent.
And what project was that?
That was the renovation of the Honda North facility.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about new growth?
Sure.
On the chart, they're back on page nine. Last year's new growth was 761-plus, and this year it says 54,000?
On which slide? On number nine?
Page nine.
Yep.
New growth.
Yep.
Last year was 7...
761, 879.
Right. And if I'm looking at... This year it says 54,000?
No, it should say 854.
Oh, it's an eight. I'm sorry. Thought there was a dollar sign.
No.
Thank you.
I wouldn't be here if it was only 54,000.
Right. So, that leads me to my next question. Maybe you don't know, but what's the prognosis for new building permits the next two years out?
I don't know the new building permits, but again, next year, you'll see a good chunk of growth from Maple Square, because it should be complete.
Go into next year's.
Yep, it will go into next year. You'll have the hotel, which should be a good number. And then you'll have, depending on how many buildings they get done this year, you'll have some of the McGovern Auto on Route 114.
But those are already building permits issued.
Right. That will be growth for next year, though.
And that will be growth. So, my question really is, what does it look like for new building permits not issued going out the next couple of years?
That, I don't know. I don't know of any other major projects.
That'd be a question for the budget hearing.
Question for planning, or, you know, they know more about what's in the pipeline than I do.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Back to another question. You said of the $854,000, 19 percent was Maple Square. Given the occupancy of Maple Square on January, what was the split? What do you think it was last year and next year will be 100 percent? How much should you charge against that this year?
I can tell you that the value will go up another... The value right now?
Yep.
I think we have it around 36 million?
Mm-hmm.
And it should go up... I'm not gonna... I'll give you a broad number.
Yeah, broad number.
Another 20 to 30 million.
So, 65 million roughly?
It should be in the ballpark.
Plus or minus, okay.
Yep.
And that's then against the residential, against the commercial rate. Thank you.
No, it's actually... That building is 94 percent residential, so...
Residential, thank you.
So, and 6 percent commercial.
6 percent commercial?
It's a mixed-use building.
Right, that's right. And when you say residential, is it condos or apartments? I can't remember.
They're apartments.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So, selecting the minimum residential factor, a factor of one would be no split tax rate, just a single tax rate across all classes of property. But Mass General Law allows the Select Board to select a factor of less than one, which shifts some of the burden from residential onto commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, this is... This slide here kind of shows how we come up to that, what we call the uniform tax rate, which is if there was a single tax rate. The item on the left is called our LA4, which is a breakdown of the values...
Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, this is, uh, my name's John LaBelle. I'm the chief assessor for the town of Danvers. All right, uh, the reason I'm here tonight is to, uh, help you all with the annual classification hearing, uh, and the purpose of this is for the select board to determine the allocation of local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real estate plus personal property for fiscal year 2026. Uh, in deciding the allocation, the board must adopt a residential factor which is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy applied by the five classes of property. Uh, and this is all done under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. In doing so, uh, the board has a, uh, four actions that they have to take. Uh, the first is the, the board has to, uh, select, uh, whether or not to, um, uh, in, uh, sorry, in addition to selecting the, uh, the factor, um, there's three other options, uh, whether or not to, uh, opt for a shift within the residential class between residential and open space and among commercial properties, and we can, we'll talk about those a little later. Uh, so in summary, uh, this four duties tonight, uh, selecting a minimum residential factor, whether or not to select an open space discount if you want to grant a residential exemption, and if you want to grant a small commercial exemption. And throughout this process, if you have any questions, just stop me and I'll, I'll answer as best I can. So I'm gonna show you some data here. Now, this data is all based on our, um, valuation data of January 1st, 2025, so it's all based on calendar year 2024 data. Uh, the first slide just kinda shows the breakup of the, um, of the values throughout the town, uh, with residential again being the most at just over 79%. Uh, commercial is just over 15%, industrial at four, and personal property just under two. We do not have anything that the town classifies as open space. Uh, anything you would think of, of open space usually falls under our chapter land status, which, uh, actually falls under the residential and commercial space, um, classes, depending on, on the actual use. This slide here just kinda further breaks down, uh, the history of, of the, uh, distribution of the values. Um, just slightly gaining more residential at year after year. Over the last three years, it's been about a 1% change from the CIP class to residential class. Uh, this slide here just kinda shows the valuation changes for FY '26. Overall residential values are up about six and a half percent. Commercial, just over five. Industrial, just under five. Personal property remained kinda flat throughout the year. And this slide here kinda further breaks down the residential class. Apartment buildings over four units saw the biggest jump in valuation mainly because of a, a big building down the street, uh, which contributed to that value. Uh, three families are up just under 7%. Two families just over 7%. Um, condos, about five and a half percent, and single families just over 5%. An increase in the, in the average value. Uh, this slide here just kinda compares this year's levy to last year's levy, uh, showing the, the growth, um, overall that the increase in the, in the total, in the actual levy for this year is 3.4%. Uh, kinda shows the, the breakdown here.
The excess levy capacity, how much of that is attributable to, uh, the Maple Square project? A rough idea?
None, none of the excess levy. This is how much of the, uh-
I'm sorry, not excess levy. How much, how much can pa- how much should the valuation increase? What, how much is Maple Square bringing in tax-wise?
Tax-wise, I'll, I'll get to that in the growth.
Okay, thank you.
I'll tell you that number.
Thank you.
Value-wise, just before I get there, the value for this year is not at 100% complete. It's still, as of January 1st, it wasn't fully occupied, so we're not up to the 100% valuation on the property yet, but I-
Okay.
I will go over that.
Thank you.
I'll go over it right now. Uh, so this chart kinda shows the history of, of our new growth. This year, the total growth in tax dollars is, uh, just over $854,000. Um, of that, 19% was Maple Square. And just to put that kinda in perspective, the next highest project bringing in growth was 8%.
And what project was that?
Uh, that was the renovation of the Honda North facility.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about new growth?
Sure.
Um, on the chart, they're back on page nine. Last year's new growth was 761-plus, and this year it says 54,000?
On which slide? On, on number nine?
Page nine.
Yep.
New growth.
Yep.
Last year was seven-
761, 879.
Right, and if I'm looking at, this year it says 54,000?
No, it should say 854.
Oh, it's an eight, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thought there was a dollar sign.
No.
Thank you.
I wouldn't be here if it was only 54.
Right, so, but that leads me to my next question.
Okay.
Um, maybe you don't know, but what's the prognosis for new building permits the next two years out?
I don't know the new, new building permits, uh, but again, next year you'll see a good chunk of growth from Maple Square, cause it should be-
Go into next year's.
Yeah, it will go into next year. Uh, you'll have the hotel, whi- which should be a good number, and then you'll have, depending on how many buildings they get done this year, you'll, you'll have some of the, um, McGovern Auto on Route 114.
But those are already building permits issued.
Right, that will be growth for next year.
And that would be growth, so-
Right.
My question really is, what does it look like for new building permits not issued going out the next couple of years?
That, I don't know. I don't, I don't know of any other major projects.
Probably that'd be a question for the budget hearing.
Question for planning, or, you know, they, they know more about what's in the pipeline than I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, back to another question. You said of the $854,000, 19% was Maple Square. Given the occupancy of Maple Square on January, what, what was the split? What do you think it was last year and next year it'll be 100%? Now, how much, how much did you charge against that this year?
I can tell you that the value will go up another, that the value right now-
Yep.
I think we have it around 36 million.
Mm-hmm.
And it should go up, I'm not gonna, I'll give you a broad number-
Yeah, broad number.
Um, another 20 to 30 million.
So, s- 65 million roughly?
It should be in the ballpark.
Plus or minus, okay. And that's then against the residential, against the commercial rate? Thank you.
No, it's actually, that building is 94% residential, so-
Residential, thank you.
So, and 6% commercial.
6% commercial?
It's a mixed-use building, so-
Right, that's right. And when you say residential, is it condos or apartments? I can't remember.
They're apartments.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, um, so selecting the, the minimum residential factor, uh, a factor of one would be no split tax rates, just a single tax rate a- across, um, all classes of property. But Mass General Law allows the select board to select a factor of less than one, which shifts some of the burden from residential onto commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, this is, this slide here kinda shows how we come up to that, um, what we call the, the uniform tax rate, which is if there was a single tax rate. The item on the left, left is called our LA4, which is a breakdown of, of the values of each type of property, and then the, the item on the right is from a couple of slides ago, our actual levy. So what we do is we divide the levy by the total value in town, and we come up with a, a tax rate of $12.31 before any shift is applied. Uh, this slide here is just, uh, some historic data on the average single-family tax bill in town. Um, I mean, sorry, the average value, not the tax bill, the average value, which, uh, this year for single-family, the average value is up a little over 5%.
Just a, um, record-keeping or, or a, uh, a presentation request?
Yeah.
Next year, the table on page 13-
Yep.
Goes from the oldest to the newest, if you go back one page.
Yep.
And on the next page, on page 15, it goes from newest to the oldest. So I'm trying to do comparisons and it's-
Okay.
And I'm cutting and pasting and throwing it in Excel, and I gotta rework it.
Okay, I can do that.
Thanks.
Uh, this slide here just kinda shows a comparison of Danvers to some of the surrounding communities. Surrounded communities and other communities of, of similar size, of where you fell in last year with, as far as the number of parcels and the average tax bill. And this slide here shows, uh, the historic shifts. So historically, if you, if you go back to the beginning, you know, the, the residential percentage has been, the last few years, 68, I mean, 78 to 79% of the overall value. And over the last few years, the, the board has kinda flipped roughly 9, 10% over to the commercial, if you look at it this way.
And if I might, you may get to this, but in 2024, you said the max shift was 1.75 allowed, and then again, this year, why is, why are those two years allowed to go to 1.75? And if you, if you wanted to defer the answer, that's great.
No, I, I can, I can tell you right now, um, it's not in the slide presentation, um, but if you take out the, the actual report that I gave you, and you go to page eight, I, I can explain the math to you.
Great.
And hopefully it makes sense.
All right, i- i- if there's a, if there's a reason for it, that's fine. I, I just, I noticed the anomaly and I just wanted to make sure.
And it's, it's based on-
Explain it, yeah, explain it.
All right, so, last year, after the shift, residents paid 68.48% of the, of the, of the levy, okay? So this year, we're at 79.1% before we do anything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that means commercial makes up 20.9% of the overall, right? Based on the, the current values, all right? So we take that 20.9, and we multiply it by 1.5, which was the original law, is you can ship 50% onto commercial. That gives us a number of 31.4169. We subtract that from 100, and we get the number, two numbers down, 68.58. Okay, so it's saying, because if we go, only go to 1.5, you can't get to where you were last year. So now you can go beyond 1.5, and you can go all the way up to 1.75.
However, the numbers changed again next year.
Name is cha- changed every year, so-
So this may drop back to 1.5, and we'll already be over 1.5 potentially?
Potentially, say there's a, another 2008 crash-
Yep.
-of the residential market, and now residents only make up 60%, you're probably gonna go back to 1.5. It, it's all based on where, where you shifted to, and where the town is the next year. It's a variable.
Okay, that's gonna be an important point for my, for my discussion later.
So two, two years ago, they didn't go beyond it, and then this year, just based on the math, now we can go back.
Okay, it's allowed.
It's allowed.
It's allowed, but my concern is that if we were to go above 1.5, obviously, to the benefit of the, of the residents, uh, to the, I'm gonna say detriment, that's my word, of the business, if that dynamic were to shift, we're gonna have to shift more back to the residential if we drop below 1, 1.5 or below.
Not necessarily, again, if there's a big crash-
Right.
Then the, the numbers would change.
Okay.
Assuming things keep on going steady, then yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so the, the next slide is, again, just another kinda comparison with other towns, tho- those same towns, what they've, what they shifted to last year, and what percentage of their, uh, commercial industrial makes up of their overall value. And I don't know if you wanna do the selected, the, the minimum residential now, I can go over this, or if you wanna come back to this one and do the other three firsts. It's up to the board.
Adam, Chairman, I think, uh, the big gorilla in the room is the residential factor, if we can address that, the others be easier to take care of.
We'll come back to this one then. Uh, so the first one is an open space discount, which again, we don't have any open space, so whether or not you adopt it or not, it's really not gonna impact anything.
John, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the open space, uh, we're not taxing that anyway, right?
We don't have anything that's classified as open space per the state guideline.
Okay.
They, they have a specific category of land. Bedford used to be the only town that I knew of that had any, and I don't think they have any anymore, I'm not sure on that. Um, but this classification was really before the chapter land came into existence, where you could put farmland and agri-, you know, agricultural land and recreational land into chapter status and get a reduction on your taxes. So, the things you think of as open space is either owned by the town, or it's in chapter land, getting a reduced rate based on its agricultural status. Thank you. So, uh, so no, someone would need to make a motion to-
All right, so, does anybody wanna make a motion to-
Also, we're voting on, uh, number two-
Adopt or not adopt?
-two, four first, and then going back to number one?
Yeah, we're going back to number one.
Yeah, let's do that one first.
Yeah, that's gonna have the most discussion, I think.
Well, a motion that we do not adopt an open space discount.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next one is a residential exemption, so this is basically a shift within the residential class. Um, so basically, what would happen, it, there's, you can do up to, I think, 20%. It, it basically reduces everyone's value by a certain number, depending on which number you pick, and then we recalculate the tax rate, and it's, it shifts the burden from lower-valued homes to higher-valued homes.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I, I move we do not grant the residential exemption.
To not grant, is that what you're making it? To not grant a residential exemption?
That's my motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John.
And then we have the, the small commercial exemption. This is an exemption up to 10% of the property value for commercial property only. And the value of that property can't, can't exceed $1 million, and they have to have 10 or fewer, uh, employees. And if one business, if, if there's a property, a building that is under a million, but it has multiple businesses, all the businesses in the building would have to qualify for the building to qualify. And that, it goes to the building owner, not necessarily the businesses that run out of that business.
I make a motion not to grant the small commercial exemption.
Second? Move a second? Question? Do you have a second first?
Second, discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, what, what did we, last year, we did not grant this, is that correct?
Nope, correct.
Never have.
Yeah, the town never has.
And you said the, the discount goes to the owner of the building, not to the business?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, is it, and it has to do with the, the value of the building itself? Is that what?
Yeah, it's the value of the building and the number of employees are the criteria if you can qualify for this or not.
Okay, so, but the business itself, aside from the number of employees, doesn't-
No, this is for the real estate tax and not for the personal property tax associated with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's why it goes to the property owner.
Right.
And not necessarily the business, the lessee that's in the business.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions, Gardner? Did you?
No.
Okay, Dan?
I made the motion.
Yeah, okay, motions on table. Um, do we have a second?
I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to the big one.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Um, we've gone through this, um, there's a lot of different numbers here. Need a magnifying glass. Ten times, the Hubble, uh, telescope might help. When I started looking at this, I was in that 150, 151 range, um, trying to not go too high towards the 175, although last year I ad- advocated for, um, a rate as close to the 150 to help the residents with their tax bills. We decided on a different rate, which is fine. But this year, looking at the increase across the board, including multifamilies, and commercial industrial, it's, it's tough to have a balance. Because if we stay down on the 150-ish range, multifamilies are gonna have a 5% increase. Commercial will have a higher rate. And trying to be, um, conscious of two families, three families, which have gone up, I think he said, 6 and 7% equally, um, the last couple of years, multifamilies have been getting a higher percentage increase in their values, therefore a higher tax increase. So this year, I'm looking at something along 15140, which would give the single family a 2%, 2.01% increase, condominiums 2.17. Historically, the last couple of years, condominiums, condominiums have had a high percentage increase, so this will give them a little more equity. Two families, 4.76, it keeps it under the 5%. And commercial, 4.60, keeps them under 5%. In my mind, I think that's equitable, um, and it helps keep the residential increase reasonable, something that's reasonable to absorb. Uh, Garten is afraid if we go too much over the 150, then what happens next year? He's right, but historically, we've only gone, been able to go to 175 twice. We've only met the parameters twice in the last so many years.
I'm sorry, did you, Dan, did you, are you suggesting 1.510?
Yeah, 15140.
140, okay, thank you.
Yeah, 140. I mean, they're all so similar when you're looking in those ranges. I figured, I didn't think going below 2% for the single family is fair to everybody else either. It's really, it's equitable, um, which, as John said, we've changed that percentage by 10% from residential to, uh, commercial over the last number of years. Trying to say equitable, what's where I'm, that's what I'm advocating for.
Madam Chairman, I'm happy to have full discussion now, or do you want a motion and so that we can have discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have discussion.
Do you wanna make that motion?
Well, I, I think, let's have discussion, see what the other members feel, then we can settle in, yeah.
We wanna have discussion.
So, so to that point, I understand the point you're trying to make. My concern is that multifamily, two families and three families, only represent-
Small for-
-less than 500, or just over 500, out of 6, 7,000 non, uh, you know, single-family condominiums and apartments outpace that dramatically, but even 500 out of, you know, if you're just single families, that's 500 out of 6,175 single families, you're talking less than 10% that adversely affect, I believe, the single families with that number. Cause my focus, I, I saw that, and, and I looked at all residential, and I didn't consider all residential, cause that was a, one of the categories that everything was glommed together, but where there was such disparity between apartments, condominiums, three and two, and then single families, I really focused on the single families, because that was the, far and away, the vast majority. Single-family condominiums were almost in line this year, so if you, you could bundle those two.
For the first time in a number of years.
Yeah, first time in a number of years, you're absolutely right. So, while I understand it, I'm just, I, I have some other thoughts, and, but my thought is, I don't wanna weigh too heavy about the three and two-family homes to the detriment of the 6,000 or 7,000 of the others.
And that's why that 2% increase is not a detriment.
Looking at the numbers, okay.
Over the last couple of years, what we've, what we've assigned them.
Okay, uh, just-
Yep, no, you're right, that's a small percentage, but it's part of the makeup of the valuation-
Yep.
And the classification, um-
So your, your suggestion, Dan, is, is it about 12, 12 and a, $12.09 a month per family on a single family?
Um, well, it's 153 a year, Mike, I didn't break it down. 153 residential, 105 on condos, still $383 on a two-family. It's a big number.
But, uh, measurably a larger value. It's, it's three, it's three singles, if you're, it's not quite three singles, we all know the reality of that, but it is, i- i- if you divided that by three, you know, that number by three, you, you know, you're, you're spreading that wealth amongst three families.
I know, when somebody sits down and writes out the check for the tax bill.
But they're writing it for, but they're writing it for three, three, three distinct residential units. A single family is one residential unit, a three-family is three residential units. Granted, we all understand that it doesn't have the same property tax, that has the same makeup, the, the same look, but if that were three times a single uni-, a single family, I would consider that in line. Maybe, maybe not twice three, three times.
But then conversely, if you take a three-family, the value of that three-family, some million dollars, and the average home in Danvers is, how much, single family?
630?
Seven.
Mr. LaBelle?
7, 730.
730.
Is that an average, really?
That's the average.
That's what he's saying.
But what's the average three-family?
900?
I don't have that on, on my sheet.
The, the average market value is around a million dollars.
It's probably not 20, 2,100.
It's certainly not.
It's probably not, and I, I grant all of that, but it's still a value higher than a single family. It would be more than 700, let's just use very, very rough numbers, but let's say it's 750 is the average single family. The average two-family is higher than that, the average three-family is probably higher than that. And so if your value is higher, it's relative to, your tax bill is relative to your value.
Right, and that's why I wanna keep it under 5% to be reasonable.
Well, let's-
All right, we need to have somebody else.
Yeah, what do you have to say?
I, I, I was looking more at the all-residential. I didn't necessarily break it down by single and three-families. And I'm, I was also very sensitive to the shift that we're gonna be giving the businesses, especially the small businesses. I wish there was a way to have one for small business and one for the big car dealers. That, that can't happen, right? Whatever we do for the businesses is, is for everybody.
By value.
Okay, so, uh, I was looking more at a 1.4990, and my thought on that was the fact that if you look at the all-residential, it's 3.57%, and the businesses is 3.59%. So, we shifting it in a- So, we're shifting it in a way that the businesses, and just so people understand what that means in dollars. If we have a 1.499, a single family would be $182. That's about 2.39%. A condominium would be $124 a year, which is about $10 a month. The two, three families would be $414. And then the businesses would be about $1,400, $1,488. But if we shift to the 1.5140, that business will be at $1,907. I think that's a lot for a small business.
Dean, I'm not sure, at 1.4990, businesses actually benefit almost $2,000. It's a minus $2,000, $1,800 for a business. You're right.
No, it's $1,488, and with a change of 3.59.
I'll redo my calculations, but the average?
I'm going by the chart that we got, like this, the chart that the assessor gave us. Unless, John, you have the, Matt, go on.
No, no, I'd rely on the assessment before mine, or I'd validate mine.
So, to D's point, I did start D looking at 1-5-0-1-0, and then my thought process brought me up to the 1-5-1-4-0.
Yeah.
So, I started a little lower than I did, but.
The 1-5-0-1-0, I mean, I think it's still fairly, it's still closer, it's still a closer shift than the 1-5-1-4, because at the 1-5-0-1-0, the residential is still 182, so there's really, it's still 2.39%. So, they still don't get the bulk of it. The condominium is the same, 124. There's just a little more shift from the two, three families to the businesses. So, instead of 1,400 for the business, it's going to be 1588, which is 3.75%. I mean, I'm palatable to that, that's close enough, but I think 1,900 is a lot for a small business.
But am I, am I correct in the chart saying that that business is worth 2.2 million dollars, 2.3 million dollars, the value of that business?
The average commercial and industrial property, yes.
Yeah, so if that's the value that we're using for these numbers, right? Is that right?
The 2.328.
So, I'm just saying that that bump may not be as severe for them, if they're.
Definitely, I mean, I wish we could charge the big car dealer more, but since it's going to be the same, the battle down on Maple Street is going to take the same beating as the big dealer. So, it's like, we got to balance.
But per the value of their business, isn't it?
Yeah, the big car dealer is a lot more than $2 million.
That's right.
So, like.
20 million?
The place on Elm Street that sells tea, they're not going to pay 1,400 bucks, right? They're going to, it's going to be adjusted per the value of their business?
Based on the value of the property, yes.
The property. Okay.
So, John, how do, how do we, and Rodney, how do we do this to keep it level? Because we don't want it to be too much of an impact for the residents, you know? I mean, I know we're setting it, but.
So, the assessors always started with, by telling us where we were last year. It's not for them to tell us where to be this year.
No, I know, but the 1-7-5 was last year, right?
No.
No, that was two years ago.
I'm sorry, two years ago, two years ago, yeah.
And we opted not to.
We opted not to do that.
Go over the 1-5-0.
Yeah, we went lower, yeah.
And then last year, we couldn't go there. If I may just go back to my original premise, when I was given the value of a multifamily, I was thinking fair market value. Mr. LaBelle has a two-family assessed value at 792 versus a single family of 730. So, that kind of shoots Mr. Truss's argument that it's worth that much more according to this number. It's only some $60,000 worth more, and we want to bump up the tax bill more than double the new value.
Is that really the true value, 792?
That's what the assessor says.
That's, that's the average.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's more than that.
So, that's the, you know, there's highs and there's lows within that.
A two-family or three-family for 792 must be a tough shape.
That number represents the total value of all the two families divided by the number of two families. It's, take that for what you want.
I'll see you on my evaluation when the tax bill comes out.
January 1st, come see me. But, to be honest with you, between Dan's original number and D's original number, you're talking about a difference of four cents per thousand dollars on the residential side.
It's so minimal, I realize that, so when we pick these numbers, it's, we're all comfortable with what makes sense, but at the end of the day, you're correct. Unless we want to go to 1.75. Any takers?
Oh.
No.
D, are you staying with the 1.499? Is that you, D? For discussion?
That was.
That's what you're still thinking, right?
Well, come down a little, if D goes up a little.
I've got some thoughts too, that I'd like.
Yeah, Gardner, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
My concern, I'm just trying to find, in this spreadsheet, you have the commercial, FY '26, 2,328. But I pulled from either the report or this document, 2,147. I'm trying to find the.
That might be including personal property, which isn't included in that last column, because personal property ranges from like 100 bucks to millions of dollars, so it kind of skews the average numbers if I throw personal property into that column. So, that could be the difference that you're looking at.
Just give me one second, I'll find it. Trying to find the, there had been an average in here of, of commercial, I believe, but that's why there's a difference. Okay. I am, so, slight difference, but as I said, there's many ways to slice this, and I think Dan's right, this isn't for the assessor to suggest how we should do it, this is ours. And I would never go to a tax classification of a one, we can't walk that back, that we crush the residents. Historically, we've split at 66.34. And, by the way, a couple of very important data points here. One of the tables in here have 10, has the changes over 10-year period. In 10 years, we've gone from a 75-25 split to an 80-20, which is dramatic for as far as the value has been pushed even further onto the plate of residential. So, the value, the entire value of the town has shifted five points towards the residential. So, people talk about us overbuilding the car dealerships, the, you know, the hotels, the things of that nature. Understand that the values of the homes have dramatically outpaced it. The other important data point I want people to understand is, the average value of the housing, of houses, in 2015, your house, the average was 358,000. Now, it's 693,000, 700,000 roughly. In 10 years, you've gone up 93%. And people should understand, they talk about taxation, how we're taxed, and I appreciate everybody feels they're overtaxed, but your tax bill has only gone up 43%. Your value has gone up 93, your tax bill has only gone up 43 in that 10 years. But there's several, this whole construct of how do we split this up is just artificial. It was started many, many years ago. And, you know, you can't, I talked about leaving at the current rate, I talked about, you know, zero happening to, you know, so the residents get zero increase on what the effect is on the businesses. I came with, I came up with, in my recommendation was 1.5. So, I think we're in the same ballparks. If you really want to get even, my, usually my statement is, the tide should rise, boats should rise with the tide, whether it be commercial or residential. And that point factor was 1.572, and I'm not going to go for that. I'm not going to be very supportive of anything over 1.50. I, it's, I don't want to call it an anomaly, it's a mathematical reality that we're going to 1.75, and that's why I asked that question earlier. I don't want to go to anything over 1-5-0 in the event, because we're always accused of tax to the max, tax to the max. This time, we're taxing the max to mitigate one over the other dramatically. And I would, I was saying 1.50, so I think we're very close between the numbers that others gave. I'd like to hear the reasoning that, you know, if Mike has a suggestion, or the chairperson has a suggestion, and why? Because my reasoning is, it's close to what you guys want, and it's a consumable difference.
Mike, did you want to go in?
Well, ironically, I had a dot beside the 1-5-1-4, but then I have a bunch of dots, because there's lots of places you can go. So, simply put, you don't want to hurt the resident, but you can't hurt the business either. We need the businesses to come in town and pay their taxes so that we can, we can all have nice things. So, yeah, I was down in that area of 1-5-1-4-0 as well.
You said 1-5-1-4?
Yeah, yeah, which was the 1-53 adjustment.
Oh, okay.
For the single family.
Okay, I see.
Same number I had.
Okay, so he was swift.
Okay, I guess I'm next. I'm going to be the.
You're going to be the tiebreaker.
Yeah, well, I'm the, I'm going to be the high person. I was looking at 1.5690.
Excuse me?
1-5-6-9. I wanted to only, you know, the residents have been impacted a lot. That would be a difference of, what, $22 for residential, $21 for condominiums, $240 for two-family. What did I say?
I'm sorry, did you say 1.5670?
No, 1.560. 69, I'm sorry, 69.
Oh, 1.5690, okay.
Okay, so it's kind of hard to read. So, what I had is $22.
So, that's 22.
$22 only for the residents, single family, 21 for the condos, 240 for the two families, what's that, 107, well, no, that's all residential, and then for, and then 8491, right?
349.
3491 for the commercial.
But you're going by dollars, I measure by percentage.
Centages, you want to go by centages, well, yeah, then it would be 841.
If you go by percentages, then you're only going up.
1/4, well, 841 for the commercial, then it would be 143, really all residential.
Oh, it would be, .29 for single families.
.29%, correct.
That's right. .29 versus 8.41 is a dramatic difference. You're putting more burden on, percentage-wise, on the businesses than you are on the residential. And there really is no, there's no one who can give a solid answer as to why businesses, as a philosophy, should pay more. They consume less of any of the taxpayers in this town. They don't do the senior center, they don't do the library, they do roads, they do police, they do fire, absolutely. But as a consumer, if we went to the, if we all went to a restaurant, ordered a meal, and Mike stayed with just a salad, and that was it, while we all ordered pre-meal drinks and appetizers and entrees, is it fair for him to pay, split the bill evenly? And as a matter of fact, we'd be asking Mike in this, in this example, to pay more than the rest of us. We're asking businesses to pay more than they consume, simply because they're businesses. But the reality is, just like tariffs, those taxes get passed on to people. And so, I'm very cautious about, I'm putting too much more burden on a business for the sake of the residents. I, you know, I've already lost the argument, and that's why I'd never go to a residential factor of 1.0. But why are we taxing .29 for a single family versus 8.41 for a commercial? The dollars may be close, but the dollars aren't the measurement. The doll, it's the percentage of your value that's the measurement. So, I'm, that's why I'm not in favor of, again, further burdening the businesses more than we have. We used to charge them 66.34, even though they were only.
Bless you.
You know, even though they were only 25%, now they're 20%.
I know, but we can't keep on burning the residents.
But we can't keep burning businesses.
The business, the business, we want to attract businesses, which we will, we've got a lot of growth that's going to happen.
How do you attract them if your tax rates so high?
I don't think that's really high compared to other communities, Gardner.
Just for an example, Beverly's 1-7-5.
It is.
It has been for a number of years.
It says it right in, yeah, in the chart, yeah.
So, I mean, Gardner's right, they don't consume as much, but the 1.75 doesn't chase businesses away from a Beverly or a Peabody, maybe a Salem. So, Madam Chairman, can I make a motion just for conversation?
Sure.
Thank you. Make, we adopt a factor of 1.5100, which is in between where D and I were to begin with.
You're saying 1 point, what is it?
It's just over that 1-5-0, which I think is important to do.
1.51.
1-00. 1-00, okay, so you want to explain that, so people can hear what that is? 161 increase to the residents, single family?
Yeah, 2.11%.
And then?
Condos, 2.27. 4.85 for the two-family, which is under the 5% that's important. And then over, D, where am I on the right, 4 something?
4.26.
4.32.
4.32, thank you, that's right.
And if you express it in dollars, for a single-family, it would go up $160.53 a year, versus a business which would go up $1,791 a year. And again, value to value, percentage to percentage, you're doubling the percentage. But now, now we're getting into shaving pennies, because.
That's what it is.
I know, I had the other, I had the other option, 1.50, so. I'll be supportive of 1.51.
Is that a second, Gardner?
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Anybody else?
I'll go with that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I do think, I mean, it's still a little higher than what I, because here, we have, the all-residential is 3.27, and the businesses are 4.32. So, that's another 1% increase toward the businesses. So, dollar-wise, so we're going from 161 for the residents, $14 a month, to the businesses, which is 1791. I mean, I'll support it, it's a little higher than, I would have wanted to be more even, but.
So, throw it out.
No, no, this is fine.
We got a first and a second.
Yeah, we got a first and a second.
First and a second, all in favor?
I can't make another motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
You're saying no, and, and what was D's vote?
D said yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, 4 to 1.
4-1. So, that's 1.5100.
Yes.
And then the residential factor is .8649?
Yeah. Correct, correct.
Yes.
Everybody to the eye clinic. Can't read this thing.
1.5100.
You didn't offer it.
Come, come see me next time.
Okay, thank you, board members. Okay, let's put that aside. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Rodney, thank you for all the hard work. Okay, so, excuse me, oh, your rule is back, rule is back for the clerk, she wants them back. Thank you, thank you, those helped a lot. Okay, the board will consider reappointment of Rodney Conley to the retirement board. Welcome, Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Didn't time that right after the tax rate, but, okay.
I was going to let you go, but-
I'll talk about this about that next time.
So why should we reappoint?
I know. Okay, board members, do we have any questions for Rodney? All right, do I have a motion?
Yes.
I move we accept the reappointment. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead, no, go ahead.
You did it.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Mr. Conley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the board will continue discussion of recommendations by the Town Meeting Manager Acts Review Committee. All right.
I have this many papers.
I know, there's a lot of papers today, thank you, okay. All right, tonight, let's see, November 17, 2025, will continue deliberations on the changes to the Town Manager Act, specifically the recall elections provision proposed by the review committee. The goal tonight is to determine consensus of the board related to the recall provision. Staff will then work with town council to draft a warrant article, if appropriate, to reflect our deliberations. We will then review and discuss the updated versions of both the Town Meeting and the Town Manager Acts, as well as draft warrant articles at our next December 2 meeting. As a reminder, folks, tonight is a public meeting, and is for select board deliberations. The public hearing for the proposed warrant articles is scheduled for December 16.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Sorry.
Please.
This warrant article came before the board probably six years ago. I know I was the author of it. I did a lot of work with town council, I did a lot of work with, of research, I came up with the wording, I put it by then our town council, and forwarded it on and asked this board, when I was a, you know, a member, if, if we would adopt this as a select board warrant. The answer was 3 to 2 against adopting it as a select board warrant. And we then left it to one citizen who took up the language at the, at a town meeting, I believe it was in 2023, it may have been 22. That effort failed on town meeting floor, it was new, on, on, you know, had a lot of questions. It failed, it was picked up by a second citizen as a citizen's petition. It failed, including a, it, it had a unfavorable recommendation from FinCom on both of those years. There was amendments offered to reverse that, which failed, and they, and the, and the FinCom, the FinCom recommendation was upheld. Then it was, it was, that was the same year, we were discussing the formation of the Town Meeting and Town Manager Act Review Committee, and it was pushed to that board committee for review as well. As we've heard, it can't be in either of those documents. This would require a home rule petition, which is a completely different mechanism by the legislature, to allow us to adopt it if it were to be forward to them for adoption. So I guess the question tonight is, is the board going to embrace this as a select, select board warrant, in which case we would then work with the town council to do the things outlined here, and if not, leave it to a citizen's petition again, which frankly, I would be very much in favor of, and maybe even oppose myself. So the question is, do we, do we think that at this time, this is an opportunity for the select board to put forward this warrant? This is the nuclear option. This is if someone is convicted of a crime, we currently have no mechanism for removing them. The numbers and thresholds in this document are so incredibly high, I cannot envision it would happen unless for something so heinous, so awful, that it would be, it, it says right in here, you cannot remove someone for doing their job, you may not like their votes, you can't remove them for doing their job as a select board member. The thresholds for getting signatures and the timeframes for getting signatures are so tight, again, it would have to be a heinous, heinous act, that people would say, this person should not be in charge of, 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 of the town in any manner. And I'm choosing the select board, but this happens, would also happen for school committee and for, I believe, library as well. So it boils down to, are we, is the board looking, willing to adopt furthering this as a potential select board warrant? And I'm no, I counted the three wrong the last time, I'm hoping I count the three right this time.
Dan, what are you, what are you, what are you thinking?
You know, I don't lose any sleep over this one. I mean, what is the benefit? What's the harm? It's like, I have no real opinion on this. As Gardner says, it's so difficult to get over the thresholds, it's like, why bother? Unless it's really something serious. And if something really serious, somebody would be arrested and be going to jail without us recalling them, in my opinion. I mean, whatever the board would like to do, I'll go along with it. I'll be, if we do it, fine, if we don't, fine, it just, again, there's, there's no benefit, there's no harm, either way.
Okay, let me just read about the recall elections as proposed by the review committee. Subsection A establishes which elected officers may be subject to recall. Section B establishes the process, as you were saying, Gardner, at least 350 voters file an affidavit with the clerk to clear grounds for recall. A voter and official cannot be grounds for recall except in a conflict of interest. Violations, the clerk issues blank petitions, petitioners have 20 business days to return to the clerk. We need signatures of 20% of the registered voters in the town, and the clerk gives to the registrars of voters, and registrar has five business days to certify signatures. And then, and with the review committee also in there, subsection C establishes the processing for scheduling the election. If the petition is certified by the registrar's, respective board is notified, subject of recall is to be notified by said board within 72 hours. Officer subject to recall resign within five days. Election ordered by select board, not less than 64 days, no more than 90 days, unless another town election is scheduled. And then, section D, the warrant must be in accordance with the election laws. Section E establishes the ballot format. Section F establishes process for filing vacancies if an officer is recalled. Subsection G establishes rules for filing subsequent recall petitions. And subject E establishes that officers have not been recalled or resigned or in recall proceedings, shall not be appointed to the town office within 12 months. Natalie is also here, and Mike Trainor are also here, if we have questions for them.
But the, all those conditions there are based on home rule petitions that passed. So the, the structure is sound, the, the legal guidance we got from town council is sound. This is the George Santos and Matt Getz nuclear option. People who are so, who have done things that are so abhorrent, that they, they were removed. We don't have a mechanism for removal. You can't, you can't enforce a law you don't have in the books.
Dee, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I actually have been losing sleep over it, because I, I didn't think it was necessary. But then the more I thought about it, and the more I looked into it, I said, I actually believe it is necessary. And I can't thank Mr. Trainor enough for being persistent with this. This is what governing the people by the people is all about, so thanks for all the information. I don't know if this was available to the public, to you, Madam Chair, the, the note from the town manager and the, the town council?
Um, the, what he's referring to is a memo from town council that walks through the process that the select board would have to do to get it through the legislature. No, it's a technically attorney-client privilege, but I'm also, it's a process document.
Okay, because it, it appears to me that, that it was very helpful for me to see that the town council explaining to us how we could get this to the finish line if we choose to do it. The first thing was to draft the proposed special act, which is probably one of the draft that you read there. But, but then when I look at the town meeting from last year, Article 38, the citizen petition, the recall provision, I believe that had passed. Is that correct?
No.
It did not pass?
Failed.
I was looking at-
This failed, that's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Okay, okay, that, that answers that question. Yes, I do believe that we should have it as a select board warrant, bring it back to town meeting for approval. I think we should seek guidance from town council on the language to make sure that it passed legal muster. I would even go one step further. There's something that that says it should not happen for a vote. I think we should even take that out.
I'm sorry.
We should remove that.
What are you suggesting?
The reason, the reason for the recall is whatever reason the resident believes that the person needs to be recalled for.
I would disagree vehemently.
It could be any reason.
No, I, I, I would, I would, I would say, I'll let you finish.
I'm not done yet. So if 300 people can sign petition, and then someone can get 20% signatures within 20 days, yeah, you probably need to be recalled. So, and because when we start saying it can't be for a vote, I mean, even if it's for a vote, all the person has to do is to say it's not for a vote. And then we're putting the town clerk in a position where, where she has to decide, is this because of a vote, is this not because of a vote? If you want to have a recall petition, it just has to have a recall petition, and the petitioner should state the reason. If they say it's for a vote, then the people who signed the petition can decide, and then the voters will ultimately decide. If they say it's for something else, it will go through the same process. That way, it's not up to the clerk or anybody to decide, except the petitioners themselves.
You are correct that the petition has to give a reason that they're proposing, but we're hired to do tough work, we're hired to make hard decisions. What's right, what's right isn't always popular, what's popular isn't always right. And if we make a vote, just, and if you, if you open this up to the fact that I don't like the way you voted on my, on that subject, I think that it's, I, I would not support that at all. It should be a reason outside why we, we were elected to make decisions. You should not be able to recall me, or any politician, for doing that work. The work is hard, the work is not often popular. Let's give a, a real-life example, the blue line issue. There were many people who, no matter how you voted on it, didn't like the way it was voted, or the hockey incident, whatever it might be, there, for the school committee. There are people who make unpopular votes that they believe are correct and sound, outside the emotion of the moment. And if I'm hired to do, make decisions, even the tough decisions, that should not, and I do that work with full, with my best intent, and with my full heart, that is not something I should be recalled for. And none of the other recall, home rule petitions allow for that either.
When I look at the example for the one that the town-
Shirley.
-council shared, it said, any holder of an elective, and this was from 2016, an act, any holder of, of an elective town office in the town of Shirley may be recalled from office for any reason by the registered voters. It doesn't pass, because when we start passing the reason, and we dictate to people what the kind of reason that need to be used, I mean, where does this start?
And I can show several others, that was one example, I can show several others that I based the language on, that also precluded votes, your, your honest vote as an electorate official.
I totally agree, this one was very simple, it said, I mean, once you meet all the other criterias, section one of that Sharon example says, for any reason deemed necessary, because if we think about it, you can't do it six months after you enter office, you can't do it six months before you end, so that's one year, that's-
No, the, the, you can't do it six months before the next election for which you're a candidate. You can do it in the first six months.
No, I think that it said you cannot do it within the first six months of assuming office, and you cannot do it within six months-
I'll double check that, but I don't believe that's accurate.
Unless I read it wrong, because in my mind, that was already one full year where that recall petition cannot happen, and then-
That, that wasn't a condition, it's only the six months at the end.
Okay.
Why don't we have the committee go up there? Mike, would you like to go up to them, please introduce yourself?
I'm Mike Trainor, Town Meeting Member, precinct 5. Just to clarify, I believe Dee is right with that, and it's, the language in all of these, you can look at them online, is all very similar. The reason for the six months when you first start, and then the six months at the end of the term, is because, in theory, someone could eliminate a whole board without those provisions in there. And that's, when I spoke with New Bedford, that's the way they explained it. It's a protection in there, so a whole board doesn't get wiped out.
Okay.
If that helps.
Which has happened in other communities.
Yeah, correct, so that protection is in this one, and it's in most communities.
Yeah, so, so, so it kind of further narrowed the window where this can actually occur. And then, when I say for any reason, I mean, you have three years anyway, regardless, for the voters to go back out, so you take one year out. So there's a very narrow window where this can occur, and the threshold is so high, so I think we should just make it simple and follow the Sharon model, where is any of these holder of the office for any reason? And there, we don't have to pick and choose, because what we say outrageous or bad, was bad for you, may be terrible for me, and then it, it adds a level of subjectivity, and who is there to decide?
And I think these are all great points, and I think these should be deliberated when we decide if we're going to pursue it as a select board member warrant. And, and I can acquiesce to the, to the, to the vote, to the section you're talking about, after I deliberate on it a little bit, but I'd still like to see it go forward as a select board warrant, and do that due diligence, do exactly what you're talking about.
Mike, any comment at all?
I'm in favor of it. I think that chances of needing it is probably zero, but better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it.
Dan, do you have anything?
That was a profound statement, and I'll go along with that.
Well, I'm in favor.
I'm going to let you use this, too.
Me too, I'm in favor, favor of it too, so.
So, I mean, this is not a vote, but it sounds like we're having, the board is supportive of this. I would suggest that we clean this language, and, and get some help from, to you, Madam Chair, to, to the town manager, and get some help from town council, because there were also a few things in the current act that was proposed in 2024, that I wanted to bring up, if, if we're going to use similar language. Section 2 said, 350 or more registered voters of the town may file an affidavit with the town clerk containing the name of the office sought to be recalled, and a statement of the grounds for recall. The town clerk shall thereupon provide the voters copies of printed form petition blanks. addressed to the respective board. I, I wasn't quite sure why we would be addressing that to the board. I think that should be addressed to the petitioners.
If I may, Madam Chair, um, a couple of things, since it sounds like the consensus is there, um, I would be starting with, where we, because we've put this on the agenda as part of the discussion around the town meeting, Town Manager Acts, we need to work from the proposed, um, the review committee's proposal, which is in the town manager, the, the report of the town manager and town meeting acts review committee. I say these words a lot. And they proposed it as a new section seven. It'll be separate, but that's the verbiage we should be working from.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Which I think is quite similar.
Just out of curiosity, why are we bound by that? We're taking this out, uh, we're taking this out of the Town Manager Act because, for very legal reasons.
Yes.
If we're saying now we want a select board warrant article to, for a recall petition, why are we bound to that version? And I'm not objecting to it.
Yeah, you're not bound to it. I'm saying as an agenda item today, tonight it was listed as an agenda item under this. That's why. If, and you can change anything you want within here, um, but that's where we, that should be our starting point.
That should be our starting point. If we want to do it as a starting point, that's fine.
And I want to just, one clerical, um, thing that would, we do need to, I, I posed some of questions that I had. One thing that we, that board will need to decide, because it's not consistent in the proposal, is, um, which offices in particular. So I, I get the sense the intent is school committee and select board, but in one of the sections, it only references section two, which is only select board. So I just need, I'll just need with town council to clear that up. I didn't see from the proposal that came from the review committee, anything about the library trustees, so. I don't know if that was the intent or not. The library trustees.
Mike, go up to the podium, please.
Okay. So that's what the, I would just need clarification from the board so that I can work with council to get it done right. So if you guys want to do all the elected positions, that's absolutely up to you. I just need to know to clarify it.
So I, in the original one, all the townwide positions were included and that was recommended through certain lawyers I had talked to. Basically, they were select board, school committee, town moderator, housing authority and library trustees were what was originally included.
And then again, the review committee, you guys, and well, at least, I don't know if you intended to, but you limited it to, um, school committee and, um, and select board, by the way, by where you referenced it in other places, so.
But the moderator's moot, because the moderator's, uh, vote, voted in every year.
Every year.
So that's moot, given the guidelines.
Yep.
I, I, the intent was not for town meeting members, it was for town-wide elections. So that would be select board, school committee, library trustees and board of, uh, housing board.
Okay, so that's.
But that, but that was the original intent and the original language before it was modified.
So it would be helpful to hear from the board.
I, I would want it to be any of, any townwide elected body, so it's those four.
Those four, yeah.
So the moderator was put in in case that term ever changes. A home rule petition's not easy to change. If 20 years from now, they make that a three-year term, this doesn't have to be, it's, it's just all time, that way there'll be no question.
And then, and then in that case, I'd add it, knowing that it's moot for now, but in the event that a lot changes that the, and we are talking about the moderator's election anyhow, so I'd be fine, any townwide elective, which would preclude town meeting because they're precinct elected.
I agree.
I don't see them, the need to put the moderator in because it's a one-year term and we have to go through to make a change, it would be a home rule petition.
Yeah, so we're not listing, we're not listing her, we're just saying townwide.
Townwide, except the moderator.
Well, we don't even need to put the exception because she won't fit under the six months before and six months after.
Right.
That's why he said it's muted.
Okay, that's fine.
And I also, thank you for sending me to this. I also changed the hours to business days. I think the select board member Gardner brought that up, uh, last time, because if we say 72 hours, it's Christmas Eve. We don't want Kathy to come here on Christmas Day to, to try to get signatures because she, she has to get it within 72 hours. So I would say three business days, um, the next one is five business days. So, so we should change, I think it's a cup, it's section B and section C, they have hours. We can change it to business days.
And you, um, sorry, Madam Chair, um, and this will come back to you to, for, for deliberations, you know, to vote it in as an article and then for public hearing, so this, but this is just giving us the boundaries. The other piece I, um, reflected on that would be helpful for you guys to think about is if there should be notification to the officer subject to recall earlier in the process and in ca, and maybe, maybe again, the intention was there, but I, and I just didn't see it, but it's, it appears as though the actual officer, although we all know the person will know, um, but they don't, that we're not required to notify them until after, it's over 20 days, right? Because you have the first 72 hours, then you have 20 days to get the signatures, then they have five days to certify, then they have 72 hours to let the board know, so just would recommend.
I mean, I, I understand it. And you're right, this is a small town, you'll know right away, but we don't give pre-publication or pre-issuance of a citizen's petition till it shows up. Even though the clerk gets a request for a form to sign a petition, for which there's wording that has to be the same at the top for all of them, we don't get any formal notification about that in any manner. I, 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 I think that would change the, I, I guess I'd, I'd rely on the clerk's thought on that because, I don't know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not thinking we, we should change that process.
Madam Clerk, would you?
Any thoughts?
Any thoughts?
They'll know.
They'll know.
I mean, I, I would have no problem notifying someone. I mean, I guess that's common courtesy to let them know that there's this petition.
Okay. The will of the board, yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine with me.
What's the will of the board?
Well, I, I'm really sorry, I had my notes on the last year's, um, petition. Section H in the new town meeting act, um, it says, "A person who has been recalled from an office or who has resigned from an office while recall proceedings were pending should not be appointed to any town office." Should, should we add elected also or, or does this encompass appointed and or elected?
It says appointed, doesn't say elected.
I know, but can they, can they run again?
Sure.
So I, Madam Chair.
Think those 20,000 people would vote for them?
I don't know, I, I just didn't know if we should, if we should bar them from putting their candidacy back within 12 months or just appointed.
So, Madam Chair, I did ask council, I had that same question and I can read you the answer, um, just go from the select board. Can be recalled, so it's in section four, wait, oh, this is a different question. The quote, "Because Massachusetts does not have a general recall status, statute, municipalities may adopt structural rules for their own governance as long as they're not inconsistent with the constitution or general laws. Since there is no general law governing recall or governing who may be appointed after recall, a restriction like this is not preempted and is considered a valid exercise of home rule authority." So many of the Massachusetts acts do include the same prohibition, so. But she did not specifically answer the answer about, the question about elected, but I don't think, and I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think you can.
Yeah, I don't think you can either. That would be a freedom of, that would be a freedom of speech or expression, is it my right to put my name on a ballot? What if I'm, what if I'm cleared of the embezzlement charge that got me thrown out? What if I, you know, I can understand maybe not appointing them.
So, and we can, that's, that's.
Right, that's, that's okay, but I wouldn't preclude anybody from running off for office.
Anything else, Dee?
Uh, no, that's all, thank you.
Anybody else? Anna, Mike?
No.
Oh, I, I had one more thing for town.
So we're going to see a warrant?
Yes.
Right before so we can deliberate on and ask any questions at that point in time.
Yes.
Yeah, and it will be based on, on what we have in front of us, except for the few things we clarified tonight.
Can somebody just clarify on that section B with the town clerk shall within 72 hours? Or did we change that?
Changed it to business days.
So two business days.
Three business days.
Well, that's three, 72 hours is three.
72 hours, three business days.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I would assume at that point, it, to Dee's point, if we're going to notify someone, that's the section we would also.
Add it to.
Say, and notify the intended person.
Yep.
All right.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I may, just, the only other piece is the vote, whether or not to keep the, it can't be for a vote, that specific language or not.
I, I would like to keep it in there and, and deliberate as a board, whether it's striker or not, or take it out and I'll, I'll argue to add a pack, uh, one way or the other, I don't care, but I think that's an important part of this.
Could I just clarify one thing that came up last night with the prior town council? So this, although it's a, although it says you can't be recalled for any, any of these things, at the end of the day, the way this is worded and basically every other one we found, with the exception of one town, it does say that the voters themselves individually determine whether any grounds listed for the recall are sufficient. So at the end of the day, it's a suggestion, but it's not on the town clerk, it's the voters that decide the way these are worded. And like I said, with the exception of one town, they're all kind of worded that way. And that's what we found the last time around.
Leave it out and I'll, I'll decide if I'm going to.
I mean, it's not a hill I would die on, I mean, I think we'll make it simple and say it for any reason, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Whatever the lawyer says.
All right, thank you, everybody. The board will consider, oh, I'm sorry, the town manager will report to the board on various items of interest. Town Manager Joe.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, I was just going to start with an update on the schedule, just so, on the town meeting and town manager acts, I think we talked about it last week. So as you know, I am working with council and have sent to you guys all the, the town draft of the town meeting act that we believe town council and I believe reflects the deliberations. We'll be doing the same this week for the town manager act. And based on those, have drafts, some initial warrant articles and have that all to you prior to the December 2nd meeting. So the December 2nd meeting is when you will really be, um, creating warrant articles. They, and that will include one for the recall. December, and I think you announced this, the public hearing on the warrant will be December 16th, uh, and then anticipating out the fin, finance committee meeting in early January. And just as a reminder, if the, the board decides to keep, continue the hearing after the 16th, we can fit in a special meeting as we discussed previously when we started this. So just to understand the timing a bit as we go forward. I do want to make a clarification regarding Swamp Walk donations. Thank you, Mr. Salud, he's doing great work in, in raising funds, but the town is, the town is not the one who's going to be accepting the donations, the rail trail that, we've worked this through with the rail trail, while there is a very old account, the accounting goes much more smoothly if the rail trail collects the funds and donate, they donate to the town as a whole. So if you would like to donate to Swamp Walk, Rail Trail has something set up online already and that's the smoothest way to go.
I'm sorry, to you, Madam Chair, the friends of the rail trail?
Friends of the rail trail. Um, and I, thank you, because Paul has been great to work with on that, um, the whole, the whole community. A couple, a couple of things, the Danvers Electric, the, um, has been, their credit rating has been upgraded from an A-plus to an, a double A-minus with a stable outlook. The upgrade reflects, uh, strong financial performance, highlighted by a fixed charge coverage ratio of 2.0X for fiscal 2024, up from 1.6X in 2022, and a continued increase in unrestricted cash and investments to over 34 million, which represents approximately 375 days of operating expenses. S and P also cited a reduced exposure to power supply cost volatility risk as we continue to transition away from short-term carbon-based bilateral contracts. So big thank you to Clint Allen, the municipal light board, um, and Angelica from the business department, her team responded very quickly to get a bunch of statistics out, so wanted to share that with you. Internally, we have kicked off budget season, I think you all know, um, so we'll be having our internal meetings over the next few months and that process started off with a capital planning meeting, uh, that is one of our initiatives to, um, work towards organizational alignment. I didn't speak last time about the International City Managers Association Conference that myself and Jen attended. I wanted to give you guys just a short update on some of the things that we spent time on. I focused my time there on sessions that were related to the goals and objectives that you all voted on. I received, I went through a certificate training process on how to make trust and organizational foundation, attended sessions on succession planning, community engagement, difficult conversations, um, all of, all of the above. So thank you for the opportunity to attend, um, is definitely worth the effort. And there are two, um, we've submitted two different projects, uh, from Danvers to be presented possibly at next year's ICMA, so, um, it would be a pretty big deal if the town of Danvers and an international con, uh, conference presented to twice, so we'll keep you posted to see how that goes. Some events that we went to recently, and thank you, the whole board was at the Veterans' Day Ceremony, um, Kelly and her team and Dick Moody, um, thank you all, the, it was an incredibly moving, um, event in, in honoring our veterans. I think I was most impressed with Danvers, they engaged every age group from the littlest, little ones singing "It's a Grand Old Flag," um, to the veterans who led the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance, so thank you, thank you, Kelly, thank you, Dick, thank you, the Veterans' Council and Board for everyone for being there. The Chair and I also went to the North Shore Chamber, Veterans' Day Breakfast, which is an incredibly moving, if you haven't been, I recommend it, Veterans attend for free. That was an, that was an incredible celebration and we got to meet, there was at least two tables where we were sitting, um, were filled with Danvers residents and, um, our own Dick and Christine Moody were honored with the Minuteman Award. We also had, we did, had, Danvers Police Department had a swearing-in ceremony, so congratulations to all the officers who were promoted. Um, we did have one new officer sworn in and, um, I was completely impressed with the turnout, the family support here is incredible and I wish them the best of luck in their career and I look forward to watching them. This is, this is going to be kind of a new fun part of this role for me is to watch, um, police and fire as they move through their careers in the community. We also had the Resiliency Summit, this was an opportunity for, um, internally for the champions to get together and work through the action items for next year and then present that externally, um, and kind of take a look at the commitment to the resilient Danvers Plan. I wanted to give a shout out to the, um, Danvers High School Environmental Club was there, it was a half-day, so they were able to attend. They have a lot of incredible projects moving forward, uh, that we as a town look forward to supporting them through, so stay, stay tuned, there'll be more to come in this area in, in the coming year. And then upcoming, we have the annual Christmas tree lighting on December 6th, starts at 4:00, um, with Santa lighting the tree at 5:45. And town offices will be closed on this come, uh, next Thursday, November 27th, in observe, an observance of Thanksgiving and we just want to wish everybody in the community a nice holiday.
Thank you, Town Manager, thank you. Do a great job.
Thank you.
All right, the board will consider consent calendar items as they appear, we have a very long list. What I'd like to do is a few I, we could, um, do separately, 2025 and then 2026. Did everybody get a chance to look at, um, do I have a motion for the 202?
Motion to approve the consent calendar for the balance of 2025.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, and then, uh, the consent calendar, do I have a motion for the 2026?
Can it, can, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I'd like to maintain, uh, my, uh, decision. I'd like to maintain my decision on one of these from last year without failing to vote on the rest. Can you single it out, or do we have to abstain to the whole group?
I would say abstain, right?
Yeah, so technically for a consent calendar, you're voting it as a.
As a whole.
As a whole, so you, you all, you take, you can take roll call votes on every one of the matters, or you can abstain from all of them, it's up to the Chair.
I would just say, if you, if you want to, all in favor, aye, and then you would abstain?
Okay.
If that's what you choose.
Individually or en masse?
All of them, together.
Okay.
So Mike, you on 2025?
On 26.
On 20, okay. I'm sorry, so we need a motion, who wants to make a motion?
I move we accept the 2026 consent calendar as presented.
Second.
26?
26 consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dan, Dean.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstained.
Okay. Okay. Correspondence, select board, new business, previous new business updates, and select board closing comments. Gardner, do you want that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's see, I got a couple of emails. One question through you to the clerk, when do we approve liquor license renewals, or do we?
Still, liquor licenses are required to be signed and returned to me in the month of November.
Yep.
The first meeting in December, you'll get the spreadsheet with all the licenses, so you would vote to approve those license renewals for 2026, the first meeting in December, and then you would sign them in the second meeting of December.
Okay.
So we're working through that.
And then the question I got from one of the liquor license holders today, when, can they pick them up after we've signed it, but before December 31st, or do they have to wait?
No, liquor licenses, all license holders are made aware that liquor licenses are to be picked up on New Year's Eve Day after noon time.
Okay.
At the police station.
Okay.
Because it may fall on, that's to keep it consistent, because New Year's Eve Day may fall on a Saturday or a Sunday, and town hall is not open, so rather than say, oh, this year you're going to pick it up at town hall, next year you're going to pick it up, so the police department is very gracious, and they have always been the location for pickup after noon time.
The email wasn't about the venue, the email was about the one-day window, could they pick it up prior to that?
No.
Okay.
They're not ready.
Okay.
Still preparing, putting them in an envelope.
Okay.
And the license isn't valid until January 1.
Okay, we also, I think, I don't, I think, I didn't check, but we, several of us got, may have gotten an email that a citizen was, was thinking of coming and presenting something on a new business tonight, can I suggest that that person be directed to the police? It was a police matter. And then I was also in attendance of the police swearing-in, glad to see fellow sockman there as well, some of us were there, and it was, it was a great event. It was amazing how many, and what I thought was particularly poignant is that the chief mentioned all the family members who were there in support of the officers who were being promoted or sworn in, and it was nice, it was a nice celebration, and also same with Veterans' Day, we, all of us were there, and it's always a good take, and with, like you said, with the breadth of ages there, and I'm glad you brought your father, so. That's all I had, thank you.
Mike?
Just, I enjoyed the Veterans' Day celebration, it was a great, they do a great job, it's just that simple, if you, if you haven't gone, you should go, you're missing out, that's it, thank you.
Dee?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I attended that as well, a great event, and kudos to the DHS singers and marching bands as well. They have that medley that they play, and the veterans can stand up based on which service they've done, and it's just really moving and incredible, so thank you. I also did receive, maybe it's the same email that everyone received about a resident talking about some breakings in cars.
That's the one I was referring to.
Okay, so I, I don't know if the town manager was on this, I'll probably forward it to her to send to the police, because they were talking about breaking in cars, and I mean, I wasn't aware of this, and the teenagers buy CVS, and some juveniles in the bathroom at McDonald's. So I'll forward that to you, to send to the police. I also did receive a lot of emails about, from different residents about the clickers. The majority were in support, there was, I think, a couple that were against, but overwhelming majority were in support of the clickers. There was an email, a note that the town manager sent about the bosses, the Salem skipper. Do we know what percentage of the 500,000 rides were at Danvers Ballpark?
I, through you, Madam Chair, I don't know the number, but I do remember from the transportation needs assessment presentation that the highest increase in ridership were all people from Danvers, Danvers is seeing a significant increase in ridership, and we, the, a town annual town meeting this past year in this budget, Danvers approved the, our portion of the funding, but the, what they're going for with that letter is a letter of support for the federal funding that backs up that Salem skipper.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, that's all.
Dan?
Thank you. At our last meeting on the new business, it was suggested that my report of conversations with town, town meeting members about clickers was informal and casual. Not sure what that means, however, it's no more casual than our reports of correspondence, no more casual than Dee's update on reports that he's had on clickers, certainly no more casual than an alleged comment from a Hamilton employee. I find these comments and others as an attempt to pressure us to make a certain vote, and has caused me to look at this and make a decision sooner than I would normally do. I have thought about this issue and question, and determined that the problem really is some town meeting members' lack of understanding of the law and how our town meeting operates. If someone has concerns about the moderator's decision, they can stand and call for a recount. If other six members stand and request an agreement, then the moderator shall, no, she must pull the body. I will be voting no on clickers. In those town meetings that vote on it, if it prevails, please remember why you voted as you stand in line at 11 o'clock at night waiting to turn in your clicker before you can go home. Thank you. And I have another question, Madam Chairman. We do have reliable, reasonable electric service, they're, we just reported that their financial's been upgraded, but I think the electric division could be more sensitive to the effect rate increases have on our ratepayers. Perhaps they could come before us, the senior board in town, to explain the need for a 5% plus increase, and then it would be easier for the ratepayer to understand why. I know I don't.
Okay, great, I think that's good, thank you, Dan, for your comments. Yeah, that would, we could ask the town manager, we could have Clint, the elect, yep, next meeting possibly come in and explain that.
Well, not next meeting, but it is a rule of thumb to explain to us before they institute the rate increase. I got my bills today, the rate increase went through.
Can I append on to that, that sewer, that municipal bodies, including sewer and water, if they could come to us, I think it would behoove them to offer, they are independent and make their decision, I get that, but this is a forum also to educate the ratepayers as well, and get, you know, we can provide feedback, so I'm agreeing with you, and extending that to sewer and water.
Okay, thank you.
I think that would be good to have them maybe come and do a presentation so that everybody knows, you know, how that's worked. I want to thank everybody, the cadets, Citizens Academy, all the people in the audience, all the hard work that people have put things through. I did go to the swearing-in ceremony for the police, that was wonderful, the veterans' ceremony, the veterans' breakfast, got to love the vets. Remember Dick Moody did say, I believe it was during the breakfast, that if people want to buy a wreath, they go to Operation Truth Support.
Wreaths Across America.
Yeah, wreaths across America, right?
Wreaths Across America.
Across America, and make a donation, and what they've done, and I believe Select Board Bean was there too, and we were putting the wreaths on, on the stones, was it Wadsworth Cemetery?
Yes.
Wadsworth Cemetery, so Dick did say if people want to do that to start, you know, get ahold of him for that donation, that would be great. I want to say congratulations, DM's Electric, I too have received some emails about the clickers that are strongly in favor for it, and I believe that we will be talking about that next meeting.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yep.
We had talked about if there were questions beyond what was raised here, that they would come through, through my office so that we could try to get anything asked in advance, we have not, I have not received any questions beyond what was.
This week.
Okay, beyond what was in the notes, so.
Questions about the clickers this week?
Yes, please.
Okay, so everybody send things to the town manager this week about questions or anything like that. I also want to let people know that we're having a downtown business holiday party for the businesses on Tuesday, December 9th, at the Berry Tavern, 5:00 PM, while we're welcome, and I think that is about it. It was, it's really nice to see the community pulled together for the veterans, and Dan, would you like to make your closing comment?
Yeah, just a comment, the wreaths are $17.
Oh, they are 17?
17, you know, $17 donation.
Okay.
And give the check to Mr. Moody. And with that, if you see a vet say thank you to the vet for their service, his or her, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, good night.